To call the Village Board for the Village of Ashwabnan. Meeting to order, roll call please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
President.
Trustee Paul.
Not that it matters.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
As usual, here.
Oh, come on.
Trustee Melchesky.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustees are being excused this evening.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I hear a comment?
You damn right you did.
And always remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform.
Amen. Amen to that.
I need action on the agenda, I have no changes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the minutes from November 26, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public. Must be limited to five minutes, comments from the public. One more time, comments from the public, we have no public, so we have no comments. Okay, written communication or announcements?
We have a public someplace, I mean you know that.
Well, they're not in the boardroom, Ken.
Oh.
The only thing I would like to say is I have gotten some comments from people when I went to the senior Christmas party and different things like that, on how great our Public Works guys have been doing on the roads and the leaves and everything that they've been taking care of, so Doug, you relay that to the guys. Thank you. Okay, action on the consent agenda. A, action on operator's license. B, action on change of agent ALDI and Inc., Wisconsin DBA ALDI number 54. Action on election inspector appointments for the 2021 election cycle. D, the investment report. E, general fund financials through November 2019 and budgeted expenditures.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nine, action items. Nine A, action on 2019 excess general fund dollars. Great.
This item went before the finance personnel and they recommended the recommendation. Let me give you some background. So each year, at the end of the year, in our budget, if we have any excess funds, we like to go through the exercise, it's recommended by the GFOA practice, to commit or assign those funds for a purpose. In the financials, I'm projecting somewhere around a $275,000 surplus this year. Expenditures, for the most part, are flat, obviously there's small variances here and there, but for the most part, they're fairly flat. Where we're seeing our excesses in the revenues, on the tune of about $90,000 in room tax revenue, $90,000 in building permit revenue, $79,000, there were revised shared state numbers this year, and then interesting comes up about $50,000. So, those are all good positive variances, and so what we like to do is reserve those for a purpose. The reason why is when you have any excess funds and just roll it over, and you think, oh, next year we can spend what we had extra last year, if you haven't designated some sort of purpose, rating agencies and others will view that as overspending on your budget, and they'll view it negatively. So, all we do, and we've done this in the past years, is sign it for some purpose. My recommendation this year are for two items. One is for the Finance Department for our General Ledger Operating System. It's due for an upgrade at minimum, it has not been upgraded, and it'll be eight years next year. And so you start to run into those issues of lack of support and things like that. That alone is going to cost about $75,000 to go through that exercise, I know that's very expensive. I'm recommending that we look at an alternative tool. The tool we have was never really designed for government, and as I've been asking around this year through peers, I've been getting, and actually not even peers, from outside vendors and companies that, not even the software companies, I've gotten chuckles from people laughing that they couldn't believe we still use this product. So, it kind of raised a lot of flags that, yeah, convince me that we do need to move on. So, I did have one vendor come in already, just because I wanted to know roughly, what am I missing and what would it cost? And $100,000 would cover something new, and not only would it cover what we have today, it could take on other items that we don't use that tool for, specifically, it would be far better fixed asset management and inspection software and things like that. So, the nice part is they also provided what their annual fees would be, the maintenance costs and things like that, and when I add up what we're paying today with the tool we have and some of the add-ons that I need to make that work more efficiently, and then some of the other costs involved with all the buildings inspection software, we would save $20,000 a year, conservatively, just on that alone. So, this tool almost in itself pays for itself over five years. So, I'm asking for $100,000, what my plan would be is it's about a nine to 12-month process, by the time you do the research, by the time you get all the information you need, because it's porting over all the information we have, all the history, and working in with all the different departments that get involved, and it takes a long time. So, to have those funds upfront, knowing that I can move forward would be helpful. The rest of the money that we would get, and I'll know the final number once the audit's complete, we're recommending that it goes to the Employee Retirement Fund. This has happened almost every year in the past, as employees retire, they draw down on the funds in there, they pay out their accrued sick time, accrued vacation, things like that, and so we're constantly looking to fund that, and we've used excess funds in years past for that. Today would just be a recommendation to, you know, assign those funds for those purposes. If something comes up in February and we want to switch and change our minds, that can happen through board action, we can come back and reassign funds that way too. But at least we have something in place by December 31, and it's a plan in place that we can show our auditors and show other people in the future.
I got a question, and I just thought of it in between meetings here. Is there anything, you know, like if we have a hard thing like that, I agree that, you know, like the operating system, it's a good idea to fund that so we don't have to fund it in next year's budget. And inevitably, you talk to some people that say, well, why don't you just use it for tax reduction? Is there anything that you could do, that we can do, or what kind of impact would that have? The remainder.
Wouldn't we have to raise that money anyway, if we didn't put it in there?
If you don't budget for it.
Yeah, we-
We have to have it, so how do you not budget for it?
If we don't use this money in the Employee Retirement Fund, we would have to use tax money for the Employee Retirement Fund, so it's kind of a way it is. It's using the excess today so we don't have to pull from our tax, that whole budget process in the future. So, we've avoided having, you know, avoided, but it's a way to fund that without, otherwise, let's say we didn't have that money, we will need to replenish or have to find money in the future.
I totally understand, but let's say we did an analysis of our Employee Retirement Fund, and we just used it as, and we had an excess there for our projections for five People ask me that all the time, why don't you just, you know, put it in a budget for tax reduction purposes, and not fund it, you know, next year?
Well, at this point, our tax rate is set in place, so it would have to be for like-
For 2021.
2021.
But in essence, that is what we did for the 2020 budget. So, if you recall, our debt is actually declining, so we have two decent-sized payments, one in 2020 and one in 21, and so you took excess funds that you had, we have previous, from previous years, to bridge that gap for 20 and 21. Otherwise, we would have increased taxes by about-
We took $600,000 that was left from the 2017 excess and applied it against the budget to reduce our debt service needs, $300,000 each in the next two years, so, and we have done that. It's an option, and so we have done that already for the next two years.
Part of that though-
I don't disagree with what's being said here, I'm just trying to get an answer for how you respond to people when they say, why don't you just use it for tax reduction?
I guess the way I look at it, Mark, I mean, everybody knows, I've always been an advocate to putting excess money into the Employee Retirement Fund, because we do have some significant retirements coming up next year, and what we've got in there, I don't think will cover it, so we will have to, we would have to raise taxes in 2021 budget, so-
I gave the example, Mary, that say that we had five years' worth of reserves by what we know as being retired, so that we know we're out there ways on this particular budget. Would you just put it towards debt reduction then, or would, when do we, when is, when do, I mean, I'm just saying, what would it do for us if we put it into something like that? I'm not saying that I'm in favor of it, I'm just, that's a question that I get, you know, that people say, why don't you give it back?
I'm trying to figure, I know what you're saying, but everything that we use the money for, if we didn't use this money for this now, we would have to pull future tax funds, so we're not using it to buy things that we don't need, we're always looking at, we're trying to buy, use things that are more of a one-time purchase, but they're-
Totally get it.
So, I think, in essence, we are reducing taxes because we're using it to pay for something that we would have to use tax money in the future for. So, if we kept everything steady and had to add on this, or in other years we've done building projects, we would have had to raise taxes at that point to pay for those. So, in essence, you're putting money into a fund and deferring the need to add tax revenue in the future. So, in my mind, it is a tax reduction in a way, it's just not directly, it's more or less, we don't have to raise taxes in the future to pay for some project that we can fund with these dollars today.
In some ways, it's just maybe not immediate, like maybe what you're suggesting is that it go to 2020, but I think what we've been doing is giving us the flexibility to level out taxes and see what happens, greater flexibility into the future. So, just like we've socked this money away each of the previous years to say, what is the best way in which we could use it and cover one-time costs or other things that come up, and then in this particular budget year, we said, look, we either need to raise taxes because of the shift in the equalized valuation, we would have had to raise taxes by, we would have had to raise it by about 300 and some thousand over last year's levy in order to cover that. So, by taking the money that we had from 2017, we had the flexibility to kind of store that up and see where it's best applied, and now you've applied that, those funds also into 21. So, maybe not as immediate, but it is doing what-
Man, I have a question as well, just, I'm all in favor of that, I have no problem with it. First of all, thanks for meeting at 5:30, I appreciate that. But, and unlike Mark, I've had no one tell me, why don't we give it back? Because that, as you've explained it, I don't think we can give it back because we just have to tax for it next year. Whether we should do a study, that's a different question, about five years. But, my question simply is, and you don't have to answer it, but is there something in the budget, $25,000, $30,000, that we really wanted and needed that we didn't put in the budget? Because we're putting 175 toward the retirement fund, as I understand the numbers, I mean, is there something for $25,000 or $30,000 out there that we really should have for this community? And if it's, if there is, and I'm not, you don't have to respond, if there is, maybe we can look at it and take it out of that 175, which would still leave us $140,000, $145,000. So, that's just a comment.
I think our point is to put it here now, and if that item comes up, then we would move the money back.
Okay.
But it's to leave that there for now, as kind of a resting spot, because it has to go somewhere, so we would like it to put it there, but yes, there is a chance that-
All right, I'll move to approve the recommendation of the Finance Committee of $100,000 going to the-
Can I comment?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Gary, sure.
You know, Greg, I don't have a problem on giving you that $100,000, and I understand we got, what, 175 left. The biggest concern I get, or the comment I get, is our road system. And our road system is far better than any road system with the surrounding communities we have. I would like to see some of it, and I don't have the dollar amount, but some of it put into the road fund, so we continue to have our streets upgraded and give the people the nice roads that we do have. That's where my concern is, I don't want to see us get behind on that. And by taking some of that money for next year's project, I think would help that fund.
Okay. Now, I'll move to approve assigning $100,000 to the Finance Department Operating System Replacement and transferring the remaining excess 2019 general funds to the Employee Retirement Fund.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to put $100,000 into the Finance Department for operating system replacement, and the other to the Employee Retirement Fund. Does anybody have any questions? No. Gary, the thing is though, is that with that money going into the retirement fund, if we need any for the road, we can take it out. We put in the budget, I believe we put either 650 or 675,000, 650? And last year, when we put money in our road budget, we didn't eliminate any roads to be done, did we, Doug? We did all of our roads that we planned.
That's correct, and I think last year, there was some excess from a previous year that was put into the road fund, so-
Correct.
We actually, this year, we did a little more because of that, because there were some additional funds that were shifted into that account, so, again, as an engineer, you'll always pave roads if you can, but at the same time, there's, it was done last year for that fund, so this year, there's a different need that has come up. So, the village, through its budget process, bumped up, it was 625,000 last year, this year was bumped up to 650,000. If you remember during budget, we're talking of getting up to that $750,000 mark at some point in the future. So, we're on a track to get there. What's helping us a little bit, Gary, is some of the reconstruction projects where we're putting in new concrete streets, like Cormier Road, Oneida Street, Broadway, those have helped, have taken some asphalt roads off of our program, and that's what's allowed us to kind of stay the course until we get there with the asphalt paving.
Doug, but just to make it simple, if you had another $50,000, you could do some more road work.
Another $500, we'll pave a couple more feet, heck yes.
50, I said 50,000.
No, I said 500 bucks, we'll take 500 bucks too.
Well, but like I said, we-
But that's the balance that you have to have though, because there's, as much as I love paving roads, there's needs that, and I don't know why everybody's laughing about that, some people enjoy doing that, but there are other things, there are other priorities that come up, and that's where we have to balance it with those other needs that come up.
But with the money that we put into the road budget, we, when they do their PESA ratings, if there's a bad road, the bad roads get done, correct Doug?
That's what we do each year, yes. We take our worst roads and try and combine them into sections and do those each year.
So, we're not eliminating any of our bad roads, we're doing all of them.
We're eliminating our bad roads.
Well, we're not eliminating them off the need list.
See what you started?
So, and if, for some reason, a road went bad and we needed to take 50,000 out, we can do that, we have that option.
And I guess I'm just going to put out there that in the next, could be about the next six to seven years, is when we're going to have to start doing, start planning our utility replacements in the village.
Yes.
You see it happening in Alaway and Green Bay and other communities, where their utilities are reaching an age that they have to start replacing them. We're going to reach that in the next six to seven years, and with that will come some repaving of roads at that time as well, where we'll be doing our normal mill pave, but then we're going to be doing some additional roads because of this utility reconstruction, so there's going to be a, if you want to call it a catch-up or additional paving happening at that time as well, through the utility work that's being done.
Wait till I get off the board to start that, would you, please? The utilities? Yeah, that'd be appreciated.
Okay. Any more discussion? Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
One opposed. Nine B, discussion and possible action on clerk-treasurer position. Okay, before we start that, I said it at Finance, this came up when I was at our league meeting, I was talking with a lady who was the clerk at a very small town, they only had 88 people in their town.
Wow.
And the gentleman who was their clerk, was their clerk for eons, a long time. Well, so he passed away, and she started going through his office, and every time they'd have a staff meeting, she would bring a bag of money, because she found money all over in his office. She found dog licenses that were paid for in the 90s, I mean, she found thousands of dollars. She found a $15,000 check that they had a truck that had gotten repaired, and they never cashed the check. The insurance company actually, it was like from 2004, the insurance company actually reissued them the check. So, I get all that information, and then we got the information that Patrick is running for the county clerk, and we have been very fortunate, as Mark said, in our community that we've had great clerk people that have better-
What are we going to find in his office?
That story's not analogous of my scenario.
We know that, you've done a great job.
I mean, I guess the reason why I'm bringing it up is because it can happen, and typically the communities with the elected clerk position are towns, and we're not a town anymore, and you could have somebody who never even goes into the office, you don't know. So, I know that it was a number of years ago, it was an advisory referendum question, and we started talking about possibly putting it on again, with some, also putting out some information as to why we would think, consider. I would never consider taking anybody's right to vote, the position, I would never take it away, but if the people understand why it would be good to have it elected or appointed, I think that they will have different, would have different thoughts. So, I'll let Allison take this, but that's where this all came from.
Maybe just to expand on what Mary's saying, is keep in mind with an elected position, so Pat's a little bit different being, you know, it's a full-time position, but he doesn't get vacation, he doesn't get sick leave like other general employees does. He does get benefits in terms of health insurance, dental insurance, those types of things that are in keeping with what employees pay and receive, and he gets Wisconsin Retirement. But Pat, God bless him, you know, shows up to work all the time, doesn't take much for vacations at all, but we don't have that control over, I don't have control of it, Mary doesn't have control of it, and you as a board don't have control over that person, should they just choose to not show up? That is for the electorate to do. So, I think what she's giving in that example is, you know, if you have that person that's stockpiling the stuff in their office, there's really not much you can do, because you would have to get them out of office through an election process. And just with the complexity of elections in particular, and that is a full-time duty, we rely on that for our staffing purposes as a full-time position. Should somebody decide they want to, you know, work 20 hours a week in that capacity and dump it off on staff, we would not be able to sustain that level of service and really get through what we need to do. So, it's vital to our organization, it's vital to elections, the clerk duties, they're kind of shared between Pat and the Finance Office already, and some of that's tricky just from a, you know, finances, running those bills and invoices, and frankly, it's just easier for them to do certain activities versus what Pat does. But, in either event, we statutorily need both positions, it just would ensure that we have qualified people into the future and some consistency for positions that are really vital to our organization. It is up to you whether you want to do it advisory or not advisory, I'll leave that to you guys to debate. The recommendation from the Finance Committee was to do the advisory referendum, and I'm fine with that. My recommendation, if we were to do that, is we then would have to do some mailings and some meetings and get the word out to the public of why we're doing that, so that people are educated on that decision. Regardless, that a referendum is advisory, so you're not bound by it either way, although, you know, politically you may say that's a different answer than legally, I'm just giving the legal, legal way. And I can answer any specific questions you have in terms of how it works before I keep rambling.
Well, when we put that Finance and everything, we talked about this, but I was part of the, putting the referendum out there the last time, and it was put out there because of the complexities that are changing in the office that we have there. And because it was elected, an elected position, we decided at that time to let the people decide on what we're going to do with it. And it was at 70% of the people responding that they were in favor of keeping it elected, I think that, in fairness to them, that we should keep it, we should allow the people to vote on it through an advisory referendum.
I agree.
Because it hasn't been that long. So, I mean, and that was the recommendation of Finance, that we talked about and everything. At this time, they would, you know, we would keep the treasurer and clerk positions together in this role, because when it's appointed, then we can make the appointments where they have to go, if we so choose to make that choice. So-
Well, I'm of a different view, I guess. We looked at this the last time, and Mark, you used the word, a good word, complexities, and I think this is a difficult issue for a referendum. We've looked at this, if, unless you're here daily, seeing what transpires in the clerk's office, clerk treasurer's office, you don't really understand, and none of our people, including us, we aren't here eight hours a day. So, my feeling is we should make the change, and it needs to be done, we've seen it, we've seen it work, we've seen it as a village board, and we ought to have, we do have the ability to make that change. I just don't think a referendum, an advisory referendum, you say it, I shouldn't say you, we say advisory, it's not going to be advisory, you know darn well, if it comes back big time the other way, it's, we're not going to do it. And we need to do it, this needs to be done in this village. We need to appoint someone who is capable in handling that job, and we've been blessed so far, we've been blessed. Patrick does a tremendous job, I have to echo what Allison said, he does a great job. But we may not be blessed like that in the future. So, I am all in favor of hiring a person who can do that job, do it competently, and I am not in favor of a referendum to decide that question, I just think it's too complex.
Ken, I have to agree with you. I know, Mark, it was brought up some time ago, but here's the way I'm looking at it, it's for the safety of the people that we hire somebody that is qualified to do the job, rather than an elected position that somebody could walk in and take the position and not know nothing about the clerk position. So, my recommendations would be to appoint somebody that is qualified-
But I'm not going to-
-and help the people that we do have to make the right decisions.
I, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think that we can go against the 70% vote that was just a few years ago-
I agree.
-and not let the people understand why the decision we made, or what we're making is not the right one.
Right.
Well, Mark, the only way I would go along with you is that we make the people aware of what our thinking is.
Well, no, I agree, 100%.
You know, we've got to educate them on where we're going with this, and, you know, I-
But that's what we said last time, and-
But we didn't do that.
Well, yes, we did, we absolutely did.
We didn't educate anyone.
We did too. I disagree with you, Mark, we made great efforts to do that. This is a difficult issue. The one thing I didn't say is this is an administrative, an important administrative function, it's not a policy position. We are policymakers, Allison's a policymaker, Greg, all the department heads, this is an administrative position, an important administrative decision, not a policy decision. If it was a policy position, I perhaps would agree with you, but it's not that. And I agree with Gary, I just think we have to get the right person in the job, and the way to do that is not through an election by popularity, in my view.
Well- Well, the way I feel about it, I don't feel that there was a lot of information given out the last time and I say that because of the people that I came in contact with that asked me and they seriously thought that the treasurer sat behind a cash register all day and that's what they did is took the money in and put the money out and wrote checks and signed checks. And I think that it is now an elected position, I will not vote to take people's right to vote people into an office, I won't take that away from them without them understanding why we, why we would do that. I can't do that. That's not, and I agree, it is an administrative position, it's a very important position and you have to have a person, especially with, as was brought up at finance, the complexities of the elections and those are only going to get worse, but I think the people need to know that before we would vote. And you can all vote the way you want, but I will vote to put it on a referendum with informational meetings.
I won't support that, so I just let you know.
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to create verbiage for an advisory referendum to change the charter ordinance to be amended to provide for an appointed instead of an elected clerk treasurer along with informational meetings and information to the public.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, does everybody understand the motion?
Yes, but I want some more discussion.
Okay.
If we think that we are going to educate the general public about what goes on in this village hall on a daily basis, we are sadly mistaken. I don't care how much you put out there, you put out a book, nobody's going to read it. You put out a letter and it's not going to make any sense because it won't cover 1/100 of what happens here. That doesn't make any sense to me. You have to be here to see how these positions operate.
Yeah, but you're-
And if you're not here, it's not going to happen. So I don't care how much you talk about education, it's not going to happen unless people spend the time here and that's not going to happen.
You're taking away the people's right to vote somebody in.
No, you're not taking away anything, you're adding, you're adding to their ability to operate this village in a competent and efficient manner. That's what you're doing, you're not taking away anything, you're adding to it. And, no, that's enough.
I feel, I feel that our electorate will get the message when we have these meetings and let them know what goes on every, I mean, our staff is here every day, I'm here every day, I know what goes on, I know the complexities of the clerk's office and the finance department and the engineering department and the public safety and I get it and I think if it is conveyed to the people, our electorate will understand it.
How many people are going to come to these meetings, Mary?
Well, I don't know, we did-
10 to 1% of the voters?
We did not have meetings last time.
We did, we did, we had a lot of edu-
We didn't have any meetings.
Yes, we, we had a lot of education last time.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did.
That was on the school referendums.
Yes, we did.
School referendums.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did.
Were you part of the board?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I was part of the board. But I don't, I don't remember meetings about it, so.
I didn't say we had meetings, we had a lot of discussion, a lot of discussion, a lot of what we called education. But if you're not here, it's difficult, if not impossible, to educate about something that happens in this building eight hours a day, five days a week. That is, you can't, you can't educate people about that, you have to be here. It doesn't make any sense to me. None.
I see both sides, but the fact that the board can override the referendum and change the charter, I think that could be our last resort. Sometimes you have to make decisions for people who don't understand the complexity of the decisions and the background on it. I'm fine with a referendum as an information gathering thing myself.
Okay.
Well, I've seen a lot of open meetings here for the public to come and join in on their decisions. The only time we see a lot of people is when it pertains to their little community within the village. You may see some disgruntled or pleased people coming, but I just can't see trying to get the whole village to understand what we're trying to do. I just, I just don't believe we'd see 50% of the people here understanding what we're trying to push through. I know you want to use the word push, but to get them to understand what we're trying to do. And I still say getting the right person for the right job is the way to go.
Well, I feel that if we have meetings and our job as trustees in the village is to inform our electorate and I feel that if we have meetings, people will come. This is, this is one of those issues that in my opinion is big and they will want to know and they will be at the meetings. So I'm going to go for the referendum.
Mary, our job as village trustees is to do what's needed to be done for this village that's in the best interests of this village and you all know, you know, you know that the only way to go on this issue is to have a competent, appointed clerk treasurer. You all know that. That's what our job is, that's what our duty is, to do what's right for this village in terms of operating this village in an efficient manner on a daily basis, you know that.
I agree with you Ken, but people right now have the right to vote that position in and I won't take that right away without them knowing about it and being informed about it and understanding it.
Well, I, you know, we're all elected with the idea of we know what we're doing for the best of people and that's why we're here. So if we make a decision, they're trusting us to make the right decision for the whole community.
I agree, but that's not, the items that we are voting on all the time are not items that the public votes on. The public gets the right to vote these position, this position in and that is their right and I will not take that right away. That's my opinion, so.
I've been quiet because I wasn't here, obviously, for the last time this came up. I don't even know if I was currently living in Ashwabanon. I can see both sides, but I would have to probably agree that taking away someone's right to vote is a tough thing to do. I like what Mike said with the fact that it's an information gathering. Let's say this vote comes back 51-49, well, I'd have a better chance of overturning a 49% vote. If it comes back 70-30 overwhelmingly, well, we might have to talk, but if it's a closer vote, or what if it's a landslide the other way? I, being new, would want to gather new information. That's how I feel. But I can understand 100% both sides of the story, but I think what's pushing me to the advisory referendum is the fact that it is exactly like Mary said, taking away the right to vote. Stuff that the public has a say on. And that's where I stand.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Yes.
I call the question.
Could you repeat the motion, Patrick?
Thank God for tape. Direct staff verbiage for a referendum, excuse me, for a advisory referendum question as well as provide informational meetings, was there another part to that, trustee Williams?
Change the charter ordinance to be amended to provide an appointed instead of an elected clerk treasurer.
There you have it.
Roll call vote please.
Trustee Alice, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question, I call the question.
You called the question. Trustee Allison Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Paul?
No.
Trustee Mark Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Bukowski?
No.
Trustee Milczeski?
Aye.
President Kardowski?
Yes.
4-2?
Okay.
When would this, if, let's assume this goes forward, when would it be on the agenda, or on the ballot?
April.
April 7.
Next April?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, nine C, distribution of state required housing fee and housing affordability reports. Aaron?
Under, was 2017 Wisconsin Act 243, any Wisconsin community with a population of 10,000 or more residents is required to compile two reports for housing annually. One is a report on housing fees charged by municipality and a second is on housing affordability. I compiled the reports with community development department staff, so this includes the, basically the statistics from 2018. Next year at this time, I'll be presenting the 2009 statistics and so on, so forth annually until if and when this requirement is ever taken off. So this is information, this is just for your information, any questions, I'm happy to answer for you either now or in my office.
Aaron, do you need a motion on this?
No, it's just information.
Just information, okay, thank you.
Okay, nine D, action on resolution R 12-1-19 reaffirming support for Southern Metropolitan Area Environmental Impact Study, EIS Alternative 2. There was a meeting about the Southern Bridge and we, back in 2016, did this resolution and we have to reaffirm it and send it in. So Aaron, I'll let you take it.
Sure, that's correct. The Southern Bridge, just out that appear, has gotten new life as a result of the I-41 expansion project between Shearing Road and north side of Appleton where it's currently four lanes in each direction to be expanded to six lanes. As part of that project, there is a, basically a section that allows for an interchange to be built along with this project for the Southern Bridge. What the request from the consultants is for those municipalities that have previously authorized a resolution or identified a letter of support for a chosen alternative to basically reaffirm that as part of the new environmental impact statement or the Tier 1 environmental impact statement that's being prepared currently. So what you have before you is a new resolution that would reaffirm the village board's position back in 2016 of Alternative 2, which was for a bridge at Rockland Road and Red Maple Road with a full access interchange at I-41.
Move to approve. Where's Red Maple? Red Maple is where that tanning company was for lumber, tanning company's not the right word, where they treated lumber.
It was Rich Cole, Rich Cole Industries?
It goes by that tower apartment, the home that-
On Lost Dolphin Road, out in DePere?
It crosses Dolphin Road. You remember the Club 18? Were you around, were you in that era?
Nope.
Okay.
That's ancient.
Were you?
That's a long time ago.
Oh!
Okay, we have a motion, I should have a second here.
I move to approve it, we need a second.
What are we approving though?
The resolution to approve Alternative Number 2, which is Rockland Road and Red Maple.
With the interchange, all right, I'll, fine, that's it.
Okay, are you seconding that motion?
I'll second that, yes.
Okay.
Let me make a comment, as a member of the Brown County Planning Commission, please do not think this is going to happen in the near term.
All right.
Every time there's changes at federal highway transportation and DOT, there's more activities that have to be done, be patient. I started to watch the Stillwater Bridge 20 some years ago and it opened a year ago. This may take the same process, although this river's a little bit narrower than the river at Stillwater and that still took 20 some years to get, it's not going to happen overnight. If you're interested, attend the planning commission meetings because this is a general topic of each meeting.
Do you want me to include Club 18 in the motion or no? Leave it out?
I would prefer to leave that out.
Okay, we'll leave it out.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R 12-1-19. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 10, items for next agenda, if anybody has any, call staff, they'll get them on the agenda. 11, closed session items.
During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabanon may convene into closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding the development of parcel VA-90-4-9 and VA-90-4-10 related to tax incremental district numbers three and five where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. 11B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851F, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on considering Ashwabanon public safety, employee personnel, and grievance matters and financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where per ends B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. 11C, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to the Ashwabanon public safety, employee personnel, and grievance matters, the village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.852 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Would you go to closed session?
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session, voice.
Trustee Allison Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski?
Yes.
Trustee Milczeski?
Yes.
President Kardowski?
Yes.
I'm glad we met early because we made out here by nine o'clock now.